Good evening. Welcome to the Town of Dudley Planning Board. A meeting for Wednesday, April twenty-sixth. Present this evening, we have Daniel Edmiston, Vice Chairman, Thomas Chanacki, Clerk. Mr. Richard Clark is not present this evening. David Durgan, Member, and Phil Scanlon, our Acting Town Planner. First item on our agenda, Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic over which it stands, one nation, one equal ground, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. All right, second item on our agenda for this evening. Seven PM, we're slightly over that, apologize. Public hearing on proposed zoning amendments. We have the public hearing notice. Sue into Mass General Law, Chapter forty A, Section five. The Dudley Planning Board will hold a public hearing on Wednesday, April twenty-sixth, two thousand twenty-three, at seven PM in the Dudley Municipal Complex, Room three twenty-one A, seventy-one West Main Street, Dudley, Mass, on six proposed zoning amendments. Number one, amend the zoning, the Dudley zoning bylaw, Section five, point zero four, point zero two, subsections A and B, projects requiring minor and major site plan review. Subsection three, in each by deleting the words additional and adding a new phrase after the words normal maintenance to illustrate the types of activities that are considered normal maintenance. Number two, to amend the Dudley zoning bylaw by deleting Section three point zero two Floodplain District in its entirety and inserting a new Section three point zero two Floodplain District in order to meet state and federal requirements for participation in the National Flood Insurance Program. Number three, to amend the Dudley zoning bylaw by adding a new Section three point one six battery energy storage systems to regulate such uses and amend Section two point zero three point zero two Use by District Chart by adding a new line for battery energy storage system. And to amend Section three point zero seven Town Refuge Disposal District to specify where such uses will be allowed. Number four, to amend the Dudley zoning bylaw, Section four point zero one Parking Standards, by adding a new Section four point zero one point zero nine Electric Vehicle Charging Stations to establish a requirement for electrical vehicle charging stations in parking lots of twenty or more spaces. To amend the Dudley zoning, excuse me, number five, to amend the Dudley zoning bylaw, Section seven point zero one Driveway slash curb cut permits, subsection four dot F, by adding design standards to the construction of shared driveways. And number six, by, by landowner petition to amend the official Dudley zoning map by changing the zoning district from Residential thirty to Light Industrial eighty-seven for the property shown on Lot one fifty-three B in the plan entitled A and R Plan of Land for one fifty-three Oxford Avenue, prepared by D.C. Engineering and Survey, Inc., dated November eleventh, two thousand twenty-two, containing eleven point four five acres. The proposed amendments are on the town website and in the offices of the Planning Board and Town Clerk, seventy-one West Main Street, Dudley, Mass, during the hours of eight AM to four PM, Monday through Thursday, and eight AM to noon on Fridays. Any person interested or wishing to be heard on the zoning amendment should appear at the time and place designated. Guy Horn, Chairman, Dudley Planning Board. This was run in the April twelfth and April nineteenth edition of the Webster Times?
They were run in the Worcester Telegram on those dates and in the Webster Time last Friday.
So we had, we had adequate advertisement?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, Bill. Okay. So the first one that we were talking about was the site plan requiring major, minor and major site plan review. Subsection three, do we have that change outlined in here?
Should be in your packet. I think it just passed the public hearing notice. So I have it up on TV. If people, that might be watching at home.
My packet is starting off with battery energy storage systems. So I don't know if I'm missing that one?
No, I don't think they're in order.
Yeah, they're not in order. You go past the batteries, then you go past the floodplain section. And then you'll find two.
Oh, yeah.
Subsection two amendments, there are three.
Yep, I see, I see it now.
So the public hearing is open right now, correct?
Yes.
All right, so at the conclusion of the public hearing, we start to do voting. Are we voting all six of these together? Do we have to vote on them separately? Or we just recommend?
We have to vote on them separately.
And we're basically recommending, recommending these for the town meeting, correct?
All right, so.
So you have a four-member body here, so you need at least three members to make a recommendation, either positive or negative. A two-two tie is not a recommendation.
Okay, understood.
All right, so this, this change on the site plan, excuse me, major or minor site plan review came about with the renovation of the parking lot at Park and Shop.
Yes.
So this would, this would basically force people that are doing as much maintenance as they did in that parking lot where they actually removed asphalt and repaved sections that they would have to come back in for a major or minor site plan review versus just do the work.
So the intent here is we're removing the word additional so that renovation of parking lot of five, but fewer than ten spaces would require a minor site plan review. And more than ten spaces would require a major site plan review. But we have this clause in here which exempts certain activities from the site plan review requirement. If it's patching pavement, striping lines, repairing, cleaning drainage systems, pruning, replacing vegetation, traffic control measures, and other general upkeep would not require a site plan review by the planning board.
So I think that one's pretty self-explanatory. Does anybody have any questions on the first one?
No questions here, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. The second one we were talking about is the floodplain district. And I think that was something that came to us from the state, was it? Or the state and the federal government?
Yes, the FEMA is revising the floodplain maps. And in June, they will have a public hearing in the Federal Register which will make the plan preliminary maps, final maps. And accompanying that remapping is a requirement that the town amend its floodplain overlay district bylaw. Now FEMA and, and the state have a model floodplain bylaw. And it's required that the town adopt the provisions of the model bylaw in the zoning bylaw. So we had to amend the existing floodplain district in accordance with the new model bylaw, which is what this amendment proposes, is to bring the town into conformance with the federal requirements for regulation of development in a floodplain. So we're not, we don't have much flexibility here. We have to sort of adopt the state, stated federal requirements, which this does. It's been reviewed by town council and by the state floodplain regulator. So adopting this will keep the town in the National Flood Insurance Program. So it's, it's important that the town take the step to remain current with the regulations and requirements.
Okay. Any questions from the board on this, this article?
No.
None. Our third article is the battered, battered energy storage system. And that's, saw that in here. Actually, the one that we started off with. So could you give us a synopsis of that one, Bill?
The intent of this bylaw is to allow battery energy storage systems or best in industrial districts, which Dudley are the industrial forty-three and one thirty and the light industrial districts, LI forty-three and eighty-seven, as a site plan review measure. These systems have become very important lately because of the need to reduce greenhouse gas emissions. So they are part of the whole electrification system which is going on in the country. You might find them adjacent to a solar system where the solar system provides energy and stores that energy in the battery system, which can then be released during periods of peak demand. You might also find them adjacent to an industry which also wants to capture energy at times when it's cheaper and then use it when it's more expensive. These systems are usually contained in containers, like cargo containers. They're placed on a pad on site. They are typically in the range of eight to ten megawatts, but they can also be much bigger. They can get up to a hundred megawatts or more if the grid is able to accommodate that, that size. And of course, they would then be much bigger, would, and would require more land if, if that is the intent of the developer. So this would require a site plan review by the planning board. There are standards proposed in the bylaw which require setbacks from adjacent residential uses, noise standards, land clearing standards, lighting signage, you know, buffering from, from land use, adjoining land uses.
Is there a fence requirement?
Excuse me?
Is there a fencing requirement?
Yes, they're usually fenced, you know, for protection purposes. And the advantage to the community is that it will allow use of some industrial land, which currently there's very low demand for industrial land in Dudley. So this would be one potential use of that land, which would then allow for tax revenue to the community. They typically don't, you know, they don't generate traffic because there's no employment. They're standalone. They don't have, you know, negative impacts or not polluting. They're clean industry, so, and they seem like in industrial areas, there are inappropriate land use, particularly for land which doesn't have access to water and sewer systems. There's not a lot of uses that you can put that kind of industrial land to. So this gives landowners an opportunity to do something productive with their property.
So the questions I would have, Bill, is, is this amendment or this article that we're going to sponsor, as far as the zoning goes, does the zoning or the use table, does it align with what we currently allow for solar? Is it the same as the solar uses?
Solar are also allowed in industrial districts and in the town refuge disposal district. So I believe there would be symmetry there as well.
Okay.
You did already permit one as part of a solar project at the landfill. It was sort of an accessory to the solar array.
My other question would be with, if somebody wanted to do this on an individual basis, and let's say it wasn't at a, it wasn't at a solar field or a solar farm, would they also enter into an agreement with the town, as the solar fields do, for some kind of yearly pilot program?
Pilot program?
Pilot program, yeah.
No, we're not proposing any kind of a, a tax agreement accompanying this use.
Okay.
So they would, it would just be regular property taxes or personal property taxes. However, they're assessed and, and taxed. So it'd be taxed on the value rather than some pre-programmed agreement with the town.
But if, if this unit was put in with, accompanying a solar farm, then it would have a pilot program?
Yes, it would, would then have a tax agreement which would specify dollar value per, per megawatt.
Okay, so by itself, it's, it's not part of a pilot program, but in conjunction with a, with a solar field, it would be?
Yes.
Okay. Any other questions from the board?
There's nothing here mentioning that it's on the landfill, though, in the district chart. Excuse me?
Right below it.
The district chart says industrial, industrial, light industrial, light industrial, but nothing about that.
Right below that. Refuge disposal.
Right.
Okay, I see it now. Is that not on the chart?
That's town zone, town refuge disposal.
Yeah, all right, so that's not in the actual chart, at two point one?
No, there isn't a line for TRD in the, in the zoning bylaw. It's only like a paragraph in the bylaws to what uses are permitted there.
Mr. Chairman, my concern here would be the removal of these units whenever they're no longer needed or whenever, whenever something happens. I know, which is why I did a note here for the record, that in Section three sixteen oh six, Paragraph B, Financial Surety, this is calling for the, anybody who's trying to put one of these in to basically put into an escrow account enough money to cover for the removal of the unit. And there's also a clause in here that says that the planning board, as the governing body, has, has the ability to put in clauses for inflation, to make sure that they have enough money over the years. So I think this is a, is a good paragraph and it, it just protects us long-term.
Yeah, so this would be the same and similar that we would have currently for the solar?
Yeah, very similar.
Any other questions from the board on this one?
Are you comfortable with the site plan review process for these?
I, I think I would be.
Yep, agreed.
Yeah, I mean, it's a hoop they have to jump through. Like, they just come in and get a permit and put it up.
And it is an industrial area, so if it was a residential, I think residential district, it would be different.
Right.
But it's intended for industry, which is what these essentially are, so.
Okay. The next one would be number four. This was the parking standards. So this is for the charging stations. So this is one that we, we recommended earlier because of the, was it a state law bill that came, that came about? Or were we trying to be preemptive of the state law?
The state is moving in that direction. I don't think there's a requirement yet that communities provide them. But in the new Stretch Energy Code, they're strong incentives to put these into new parking lots.
So is this the identical one that we, that we proposed last time? So twenty, new, for every new parking lot constructed with more than twenty parking spaces, they would have to include one charging station. And if they, if they built a parking lot with forty to sixty spaces, they would have to include two. And so on, sixty to sixty to eighty, every twenty spaces.
Did I understand that correctly, that we tried to get this passed once already?
We tried it once. It was, I think it was, I think we had the majority, but it wasn't, you have to have a two-thirds majority for, for zoning? I don't, I think we had more than fifty percent, but we didn't have the two-thirds. Any other questions from the board?
There's nothing here mentioning that it's on the landfill, though, in the district chart. Excuse me?
Right below it.
The district chart says industrial, industrial, light industrial, light industrial, but nothing about that.
Right below that. Refuge disposal.
Right.
Okay, I see it now. Is that not on the chart?
That's town zone, town refuge disposal.
Yeah, all right, so that's not in the actual chart, at two point one?
No, there isn't a line for TRD in the, in the zoning bylaw. It's only like a paragraph in the bylaws to what uses are permitted there.
Mr. Chairman, my concern here would be the removal of these units whenever they're no longer needed or whenever, whenever something happens. I know, which is why I did a note here for the record, that in Section three sixteen oh six, Paragraph B, Financial Surety, this is calling for the, anybody who's trying to put one of these in to basically put into an escrow account enough money to cover for the removal of the unit. And there's also a clause in here that says that the planning board, as the governing body, has, has the ability to put in clauses for inflation, to make sure that they have enough money over the years. So I think this is a, is a good paragraph and it, it just protects us long-term.
Yeah, so this would be the same and similar that we would have currently for the solar?
Yeah, very similar.
Any other questions from the board on this one?
Are you comfortable with the site plan review process for these?
I, I think I would be.
Yep, agreed.
Yeah, I mean, it's a hoop they have to jump through. Like, they just come in and get a permit and put it up.
And it is an industrial area, so if it was a residential, I think residential district, it would be different.
Right.
But it's intended for industry, which is what these essentially are, so.
Okay. The next one would be number four. This was the parking standards. So this is for the charging stations. So this is one that we, we recommended earlier because of the, was it a state law bill that came, that came about? Or were we trying to be preemptive of the state law?
The state is moving in that direction. I don't think there's a requirement yet that communities provide them. But in the new Stretch Energy Code, they're strong incentives to put these into new parking lots.
So is this the identical one that we, that we proposed last time? So twenty, new, for every new parking lot constructed with more than twenty parking spaces, they would have to include one charging station. And if they, if they built a parking lot with forty to sixty spaces, they would have to include two. And so on, sixty to sixty to eighty, every twenty spaces.
Did I understand that correctly, that we tried to get this passed once already?
We tried it once. It was, I think it was, I think we had the majority, but it wasn't, you have to have a two-thirds majority for, for zoning? I don't, I think we had more than fifty percent, but we didn't have the two-thirds. Any other questions from the board?
Do we have an understanding of what these things cost? What would it cost some kind of a property owner to put one of these in?
A lot.
I don't know. I looked into it for my, my company just put in ten. They told me it was nine hundred bucks a, a unit.
I don't even think that covers the underground conduit or the sand. I'm not a liar, going to it.
You don't have to put them under, you don't have to put underground conduit. You can put them on the building.
Yeah, but you're putting them on a commercial building, what phase three power, big difference.
I mean, like, if somebody's building a, a new project in town that had more than twenty parking places, they would have.
I know, just electrician costs three grand, just to wire the damn thing.
I just, to your point, where's the power coming from? Where's it going to? Parking lots are usually further away from buildings, so you're gonna have, have some distance there from a transformer or from some kind of an electrical generating station. Then you're gonna have underground, you're gonna have the unit itself. I, I don't know what kind of safeties around these things. It just.
Have national grid hook up if you're talking about the transformers.
I don't know what kind of power they suck. I, I don't know anything about them.
Me neither.
You can charge, you can charge it on one-ten or you can charge it on two-twenty? I mean, some of the ones they put in residential houses are just charging it with one-ten. It takes you a lot longer to charge a car on a battery on one-ten, but two-twenty, it's not that difficult.
So you have an apartment building. How many people live in an apartment building without, without your car?
How many apartment buildings have a twenty-spot parking lot and you're building it from scratch?
I do.
Well, they haven't built it yet.
Ah, they haven't, haven't built it yet.
So they're typically located next to buildings that, you know, convenient for the customer. So the wiring is really just bringing it into the parking lot. You typically have lighting in a parking lot anyway, so it's probably an additional cost, but it shouldn't be that great. You're not doing a lot of additional work to, to wire these facilities.
I mean, they just re, they just remodeled the old JCPenney's at Sturbridge. And there's at least fifteen, if not twenty, of these units in the parking lot there. So it can't be that cost prohibitive, 'cause all that's, all that moved into that space was a Planet Fitness gym and an auto parts store. So my guess is if it was really cost prohibitive, they wouldn't have put fifteen to twenty chargers in.
Some corporations started putting them in for them, making the profit.
A lot of the charges that I saw in Sturbridge are Tesla charges. Tesla may put one in for you for free if you, if you offer them the space.
Not works yet.
They're looking for places to put their.
I don't want to enforce something on somebody that has really no need for it.
What is it, two thousand thirty-five? You're not gonna be able to buy a gas-powered car in Massachusetts anymore.
Yeah, I doubt it.
Usually, you know, as more people buy electric vehicles, there's gonna be a greater demand for these charging stations. And if people can't find a convenient place to charge their vehicle, then they're gonna be reluctant to buy an electric vehicle. And it's very inconvenient for them if they have to drive around or they're going on a long trip, for example, and they, you know, need to be very careful about where they can travel to make sure they have access to one of these.
I think currently in Dudley, the only place you can charge an electric car publicly is at the library. And I'm sure you have to pay to charge it at the library. It's not free.
So the state and national goal is to increase the number of electric vehicles. Pretty soon, you won't be able to buy a gas-powered vehicle anyway, so you'll need to have charging stations for all the new electric vehicles that will be on the road. So this is one way the town can contribute to advancing that, that economic goal.
I mean, I don't think we're asking for a huge amount of charges to be installed.
I'm just confused about the whole thing. Not, not that it's relevant in any way, shape or form, but I just doubt whenever Henry Ford made the first car that Sacramento or any other city was obligated to put in gas stations for the auto users. And eventually, at some point in time, if cars, if electric cars are going to be as widespread as the government thinks they are, is it a duty of the electrical car maker industry to come up with a way to do this or for the private sector?
Yeah, like Shell Mobile.
They're not gonna go out quietly and, I mean, I, I just. I don't know if I would, again, not knowing the cost, I don't know if I would go out and buy an electrical car if that electrical car manufacturer wasn't gonna put a charger in my garage for nothing. What's the point otherwise? So, just my two cents.
Any other comments on the car charging stations? I think it was just after the next page.
It's right after the EV charging stations.
Three, four, five, six. Still not seeing it.
It's on the back of that article we just talked about, vehicle charging stations, just on the next page.
Oh, there it is, okay. All right, so this was basically to add some specificity to what's, what's currently allowed is, in the Town of Dudley, you can have a common driveway. So a single driveway to share, shared between two houses and provide access to two houses is permissible currently in the zoning bylaw. So what this was to do was to add, is it justice, no, actually, it's nine. Nine different specific standards. The distance of a shared driveway measured from the street line to the point where the shared driveway splits into two individual driveways shall not exceed the distance of five hundred feet unless the Highway Superintendent or Board of Appeals. As the case may be, after referral to the fire department for comment, makes the determination that said driveway will provide safe access for fire, police, and emergency vehicles. The shared, number two, the shared driveway lie entirely within bounds, within the boundaries of the lots to which provided access shall be separated from any other lots to which access is not being provided by an inappropriately landscaped buffer at least twenty feet in width. So we're saying, like, basically the taking is twenty feet there, Bill? Is that what that one's saying, number two?
For number two?
Yeah.
So it has to be, you know, if you have two lots, the driveway has to be within those two lots?
Yeah.
And then it must be a landscape buffer of at least twenty feet in width.
The shared driveway, number three, was the shared driveway shall have a minimum cleared width of twenty feet and a minimum travel way of sixteen feet. The shared driveway, number three, was the shared driveway shall have a minimum cleared width of twenty feet and a minimum travelway of sixteen feet. So it's basically saying the travelway would be the paved, the paved area and.
I read that by the fire chief and he was okay with that language.
Roadway surface shall have a minimum of four inches of graded gravel placed over properly, properly prepared, graded and compacted to drain from the crown. The driveways shall be paved for the first fifty feet in order to prevent erosion into the street, so that's our, that's our fifty foot. Oh, no, I think the, I think the, the current driveway, um, standard only requires you to pave the first fifteen feet, if I remember right.
I thought it was ten feet.
I think it's fifteen.
Okay.
So this is, this is a little bit more, but, I mean, it is a common driveway, so, yeah. Uh, the grade of each shared driveway where it intersects with the public way shall not exceed a six percent for the distance of fifty feet whether up gradient or down gradient from the street, and that's in our current driveway by law also. The shared driveway shall not disrupt existing drainage patterns or cause material to enter the travelway of a public street. The applicant shall submit a grading plan showing existing and proposed conditions to demonstrate compliance with this requirement. Number seven, the applicant shall submit proposed documents to the highway superintendent or Board of Appeals, as the case may be, to demonstrate, demonstrating that through easements, restrictive covenants, or other appropriate legal devices, the maintenance, including snow removal, repair, and liability for a shared driveway in all public utilities shall remain perpetual, perpetually, the responsibility of the private parties and their successors in interest. So that's basically just saying that it's gonna stay a, a, a private driveway.
There's an agreement in place.
Yeah.
To provide for long term maintenance.
Okay. Uh, number eight, the shared driveway shall never be used to satisfy frontage requirements. Number nine, an application for a shared driveway shall include a plan showing the driveway serving the premises, stopping site distances in each direction with the adjoining roadway and existing and proposed topography at two foot contour intervals. This information shall be shown on a site plan, an approval not required plan, or any other plan of the lots to which access is being provided by the shared driveway. So this is something that we already require in our, in our A and R plans today, is the, uh, proposed access in the in the driveway cross section. So it's basically adding those nine conditions or specifications to the current by law that just says we, they're permissible.
So for driveway, specific two lots, the highway superintendent has jurisdiction. So he would manage the provisions of this by law. If it's more than two lots, the zoning Board of Appeals has a special permit requirement, so they would review the plan and, uh, make sure these standards are met.
Okay. Any other questions on the driveway?
Are these standards for the, the two that the highway would approve? You know, if there was just two houses, would they all have to follow these two?
Yes. If it's a shared driveway for two or more lots, they would have to conform to this.
Now, this was voted down last time, right?
It was.
I think we did a good job explaining it. We can explain it again. Hopefully, I forgot what was going on that night, but there was some sporting event.
Patriots.
Yeah, was it the Patriots?
Yeah.
Okay.
Zappy.
Yeah. Okay, so any other questions on the common driveway by law change?
No questions.
Okay, last one we got is a, number six, a landowner petition. Um.
Not sure if you have that one in your, your binder.
I didn't see anything about it.
So this is a. I have it up on the screen here if you'd like to look there. So this was submitted by Jonathan Andrew Levich as Vice President of the Three R's Realty Corporation. Under the zoning act, landowners can petition to have their property rezoned.
Mm-hmm.
So that's how this came in. Uh, and the petition is to see if the town will vote to amend the zoning map by changing the zoning district from residential thirty, res thirty to light industrial eighty-seven for the property shown as lot one fifty-three B on the plan entitled A and R Plan of Land for One Fifty-three Oxford Avenue, dated November eleventh, twenty twenty-two, consisting of eleven point four five two two acres and assesses map two one two oh six zero zero one. Said plan is attached. Um, so this is the A and R plan that you recently approved, I'd say, three or four meetings ago. So this is north, excuse me, this is Oxford Avenue here. These are now, this used to be all one lot. And now it's, it was divided into two lots. So the existing house is now separate from the back land. The house lot will remain res thirty, which has been zoned for quite some time. And the back land, which now doesn't have any frontage, will be zoned, is proposed for light industrial eighty-seven. And this is the eleven point four five two two acres that is requested to be rezoned. And that will, uh, be used with the surrounding property, which is also light industrial eighty-seven.
So that was gonna be my question, the, the surrounding property is all industrial zone?
All of the surrounding properties?
Yeah, I was about to ask that.
Because the properties to the plan north are, but the properties to the plan south and plan west aren't, are they? There are houses there.
The adjoining.
Yeah, the residential right there.
Properties of the landowner. So, uh, this is the lot in question, I believe.
No, it's on, it's right behind the cemetery.
Right, here's the cemetery here.
Yep, so I think it's the one that we only see the tip of the triangle there.
So this res thirty, so the new, these parcel coverage doesn't have the new line division in it yet, so that line comes somewhere down here. So this portion, which is res thirty, is being proposed for L I eighty-seven, which is the adjacent land of the landowner. Uh, the other portion of Oxford Avenue will remain, um, res thirty. And there is a solar farm up here, which is under construction. I believe it's almost done. So the intent is to provide a contiguous area of L I eighty-seven, including this, this area.
So by, I understand that, what they're asking for, but because it's a single piece of land, is it gonna be considered spot zoning?
Well, it's the landowner's right to petition to have his property rezoned.
Right, but if we.
The butters have no say in this?
If we approve it, is there any way that the Attorney General could say no?
Well, we're not being asked to approve it, are we, Bill? We're being asked to recommend it for the, for the town meeting.
Right.
The town has to approve it.
Yeah, this, I don't know if this bad zoning question applies here, because you could petition to have your property rezoned. I don't, I don't think you would be called spot zoning in that case either. So it's, it's up to the board to decide whether that, this property's better suited for residential.
So to, in the, the property just to the south of that, that's in the light industrial eighty-seven, aren't there houses in that area?
I'm showing, these are buildings, so I'm not showing any, these are probably just, you know.
Oh, buildings.
Those associated with the.
There's a big gravel pit, so.
Yes.
So it doesn't look like there's any house there.
We got, we got one house there, one, two, three, four, five, six.
Can you scroll and bring everything up a bit?
Sure.
Right, so. Can you scroll and bring that up a little bit so I can see what's down on the bottom?
Yep. So here's the cemetery here.
Right, so why I understand, let me see if I can. I looked at this, this today on Google Earth or maps or something, and the property in question is this one right here, right?
It's just about.
No.
I, I don't think so. I think it's that one right there.
No, that, that's the toxic waste dump. It's on the other side of the line.
So this is the area that's being proposed to be zoning.
So does anyone live in that house? Remember when they separated? Is there anyone living in that house right now?
Yeah, that blue house.
Yes, I believe.
They don't have to, like, provide any butter list to, to talk about this?
Not for rezoning. You don't need to notify others.
I'm just scared that they're gonna, they're gonna be dumping dirt and then dusting it and flying into neighbors' yards.
They've got a, a release bill for, um, that, what the heck was it called? I was looking at this P F O stuff and it came up, uh, there, there was like a, a lot right next to it that had, um, micro, petroleum, micro something. Remember that Selectman allowed that?
Yeah.
A couple meetings ago?
I'm sorry, what was that?
Like, I can't remember what it's called. Hold on, let me try to find it.
Yeah, Marcy voted for that.
Yeah, petroleum hydrocarbons. There was a.
We found those laws already.
There's a release number for seven four three eight six five. If you go on the E E A online portal.
And that's that house?
Abandoned lot next to it, I guess. And that was one of the things that they're allowing now.
They have a D E P permit to store or to, to take in hazardous soil, contaminated soil, I believe.
Yeah, that's what the Selectman.
In that, and I'm not sure exactly where it is.
Yeah, I don't know. I didn't look up where the, uh, actual lot was in comparison, but they said it was bordering that, that place on Oxford Ave.
Right. So I would imagine at some point that gravel operation would end and they would convert that to industrial use of some sort. So this is preparation of that.
And another stupid question, light industrial eighty-seven, does it need any frontage?
This, the, the lot, in a sense, this lot would be combined with all the other property there.
It would just join all the, all the green, green.
So it would all be contiguous ownership.
Yeah.
So by itself, this lot would not be developable because it's standalone eleven point five acre lot.
Right, because you need frontage.
Right.
It were, if it's joined with the rest, what, is everything there?
We have to subdivide it, essentially build a new road and create new, new industrial lots.
But where's the frontage coming from?
Where's, where's the frontage for the rest of the lane? Yeah, that's a good, that's a good question.
Well, it's all that's frontaged down here.
Oh, okay.
So all four, five, six of those lots are owned by the same entity?
Uh, I can't say whether it's the same entity, but the principles are the same. This is, so you can see over here, the owner, Three R's Realty Corporation. Three R's. Al Larkovich. Uh, Philly Conservation Land Trust. Three R's, so they own quite a bit of it, but not all of it.
So the frontage is on, on the, on Oxford Road there, but just further.
Right.
Okay, understood.
Further to the south. Okay, so we're just gonna, we're gonna just propose it to the town meeting and they have the choice of voting it yes or no, and then.
It's the landowner's, you know, responsibility after class. They're not here tonight to, to make the case, but.
Okay, and then, and then after that, it's whether or not the Attorney General will, will allow it or not.
Yes.
So it would be the vote for us, though.
So you would need to make a recommendation on the proposal.
Yeah. We're just putting, we're just putting it forward for the, for the landowners.
Excuse me?
We're just putting it forward for the landowners.
Yes, but you should evaluate whether you think it's a good idea or not.
I mean, it's, it's gonna, it's gonna create more light industrial eighty-seven land.
Yeah, but you don't live right there. Neither do I.
But I mean, like, they're already surrounding all the houses anyways, I mean.
Yeah, but that's, that's an eleven acre wooded lot. If they cut it down and they start hauling dirt, then all those people right there are gonna like it.
But they could, they could create a subdivision right there, cut it all down and put ten houses on it.
Now, granted, they'd have to come back and rezonate the thirty.
Yeah.
It's already zone thirty.
I, I know, but if, if it gets changed at this meeting, at the next meeting, they'd have to, if they wanted to do a subdivision, they'd have to come back.
But I'm saying it's better, it's better off as light industrial than as, as res thirty, so they can't do the subdivision.
Does, you know, there's a whole sort of, of res thirty surrounding all that.
Right.
L I eighty-seven.
Well, they used, that used to be all industrial, and they came and, they, they came and asked us to make it industrial. We did. We told them what the situation was, because they had nonconforming lots, and, I mean, that, that's flip flopped two or three times since I've been on the planning board.
Okay, I'm, I'm aware of that.
Putting it back to res thirty was the last time we did it, and now, now some of it wants to go back to res eighty-seven, so. I'm sure I signed off on this at least twice. Yeah. Okay, any other questions on that one? Any questions from the audience?
General, on all of the, uh.
Any of them.
Yeah.
Steve Woodrow, Dudley, Mass. You guys know who I am. I was on the board the first time we came around with the common driveway thing, so I just wanted to make a couple of points of clarification and just also get some stuff clarified for myself.
Please come up to the mic, Steve.
Yeah, because I don't think that one's working. Can you come up to this one?
Hello.
Oh, okay. Speak louder.
So on the, uh, common driveway issue, I know it, we, we got the majority, but we didn't get the two thirds majority at town meeting. And I remember that one of the things that ended up happening was we didn't have the full board support for that. So I understand why some people might not like common driveways, the idea of possibly trying to sneak in more houses on one driveway. And I watched the last planning board meeting, um, I believe it was, Dan, you chaired it. And when the conversation came up between, um, a couple of the board members, my subdivision application actually came up as an example. It was mentioned, so that's why I wanted to speak to it. So the big difference that, the big qualifier that wasn't mentioned, and the thing that kind of gets overlooked about a common driveway, is that if you have two houses on a common driveway, those two houses still have to have the required frontage on the public road. So, for instance, if it's in a res fifteen, you can have two houses in res fifteen on a common driveway, but you gotta have two hundred feet total frontage. So in my situation, on my application, it's three lots in the back, but that's not a common driveway. That's gonna be, that's why I'm going through the subdivision process. It's a completely different process. It's a different test that has to be passed, so to speak. So I just wanted to make that note, and then I also wanted to note that right now, as has been mentioned, we already have a common driveway by law.
It's permissible.
It's already permissible. So if you do not unanimously vote to present this to town meeting for a vote, and the board isn't behind it, and that sends the wrong signal and it ends up not passing, essentially, all you're doing is ensuring that the inferior common driveway by law stays on the books and the nine, I believe it was nine different things that are being added, don't get added. And some of those things make a lot of sense. Like, they're, I was kind of shocked when I heard it. It's like, one of those provisions says that, oh, that the, the driveway has to be on the property that the houses are gonna be on. It's like, well, obviously, but apparently, the way it is right now, you could probably get an easement from a butter and have the driveway run over part of that, a budding lot. You know, the, the drainage. Crown, you know, make sure it's good compacted gravel to a good base and that it's crowned so that it drains properly. Apparently, right now, you could just put in a crappy gravel driveway and have big ruts and puddles in it and it doesn't drain properly. And, and on and on. There's several others in there, but, so I, I just wanted to, to say that, and, and for the record, you guys have seen my project. It's, it's, I'm gonna present that subdivision the way that I presented it at the preliminary, and everything else I'm doing over there are straight A and Rs. I don't need common driveways. So I, I just want to make it clear, I don't have a dog in this fight, so to speak, but I just think it would be a shame that we don't give our current existing common driveway by law the teeth that it needs to give the highway superintendent basically the authority to make sure that people don't put in a driveway that's poorly constructed, that ends up having gravel wash out onto the road and cause other problems. So that's all I had to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments?
None.
All right, so it's. Can't see with the glare, seven?
Seven forty.
Forty-nine.
Seven, seven forty-nine. We'll close the public hearing, and we can go ahead and vote on the, uh, number six proposed articles. All right, so number one, to amend the zoning by law sections five point zero four, point zero. All right, so, number one, to amend the Dudley zoning bylaw sections five point zero four, point zero two subsections A and B, projects requiring minor major site plan review subsection three, and each by deleting the words additional and adding the new phrase after the words normal maintenance to illustrate the types of activities that are considered normal maintenance. What's the board's pleasure on?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we recommend I should recommend approval for the, or recommend moving to the town meeting for a vote, how would I word that bill? As read.
Okay, so we have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous. Number two, this is the Flood Plain District bylaw, replacing the old one with the new one to keep the National Flood Insurance Program in line. Somebody like to make a motion for number two?
I'll make a motion to accept it as read.
Okay, we have a motion.
I'll meeting.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Do we have a motion and a second, all in favor on number two?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous. Number three, amend the Dudley zoning bylaw by adding new section three point one six, this is the battery, battery storage system uh, bylaw.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we, or a recommendation, that we, I make a motion that we recommend this for, to the town for a vote at the town meeting, as read.
So we have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Do we have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous on that one. Number four, parking standards, uh, this was the electrical vehicle charging stations, adding one for twenty or more spaces. Somebody like to make a motion? Hearing no motion, fails, we don't recommend it?
Um, so I guess the question is, if you're not recommending, should we just pull it off then?
Can we just still do that?
Because it is, oh, yes, it has, the warrant hasn't been printed yet, so.
Okay, if it hasn't been printed, let's pull it off.
Let's pull it off, okay.
Um, number five, the driveway curb cut, um, common driveway standards. Would somebody like to make a motion for that? Zoning bylaw.
Well, uh, move that we recommend that for the town meeting, as written.
Okay, we have a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous on number five. Number six, the landowner petition for the eleven point, what was it, eleven point four or five acres of land on Oxford Avenue, changing the zoning from rez thirty to light industrial eighty-seven, somebody like to make a motion for the number six?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make the motion, if we approve this, pass it on to the town meeting.
Okay, we have a motion, do we have a second? Can the chairman second it for the, for a vote, okay, chairman second it for a vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Well, we have two.
Two, two, so, it's a non-recommendation. It'll, it'll go forward regardless, because it's a landowner petition.
Yeah, yeah, if he was here, I would, you know, I'd have explained it, but he didn't, no one showed up to explain it, so.
Okay.
I'm more scared that the neighbors are gonna come after.
All right. And the, the landowner would have the opportunity to stand up at town meeting and speak for it on his, on his own, right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. All right, so that takes care of those petitions. Well, I shouldn't say petitions, warrant articles, the last one was a petition. Let's get back to our agenda, let's have a seat, uh, approval of minutes from the March twenty-second meeting.
Motion to approve the minutes for March twenty-second?
I can second.
There's a motion and a second. Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
So it, it's gonna be a vote of three, I'm gonna abstain, because I was not at the, I was not at the March twenty-second meeting.
So that's a good point, uh, chair, Mr. Chairman. This is a public meeting, the planning board was called to order by Guy Horn, chairman. You weren't there that time, were you?
It says
So see, this, this is the February one, right? What are we voting for here?
March twenty-second.
March twenty-second, okay, I'll look at the February twenty-second one.
March twenty-second, it says Guy Horn was absent.
Yep, okay, it was the wrong, wrong month.
Okay, no worries.
My bad.
All right, so we have, we have that one voted on.
Yep.
Um, and that's the only one we have to vote on tonight, right?
Yes.
Okay, so I have two copies of it here, if you guys would like to start signing them off, moving back. We have no A and R plans this evening?
Correct.
Uh, number four, Graves' completion estimate for Pierpon Estates and status of financial securities and possible vote to release funds from escrow. Did we get an update from Graves?
Yes, um, in
I think it's under T D.
T D.
Yeah.
So what, what's going on here is that Tony, the developer of Pierpon Estates, wanted to close out his security arrangements with Bank Home Town and Hill Financial and provide all of the security as cash in an escrow account with the town.
Okay.
So, what you see before you is the various phases and the securities that we have in place, and see the security, in the column called Security Remaining, you'll see a co, uh, a real call total, so once we get all of these instruments in cash, the town would have a hundred eighty-seven thousand, twenty-eight dollars and twenty-five cents in cash. The Graves estimate, which I'll get to in a minute, is a hundred eighty-one thousand, five hundred and seven dollars and twenty cents to complete the work. So we have more in cash than it will take to complete the subdivision. But I also have to account for the invoice that they submitted for one thousand eight hundred eighty-two dollars and seventy-six cents. So doing the math, we then have an excess security of three thousand, six hundred thirty-eight dollars and twenty-nine cents. So, my thought is that we would combine all of these different phases amounts into one account. So, it would make it much simpler to, you know, do reductions, we don't have to account for it phase by phase, we can have an overall number that we're working with. So, on the next page is the beginning of the letter from Graves Engineering, and this is their standard format. They look at the plan, uh, determine the work that's been done, what has been done, calculate the cost to complete the work, uh, and then they do that by all of the phases. Um, and then they come up with a total amount of work for the entire subdivision to be completed. And then if, it was in the um, of the sheet that we started with, so all of these phases amounts to one hundred eighty-one thousand, five hundred and seven dollars and twenty cents. Um, so, I guess what I'm suggesting is that since we have more, we will have more cash, and we need that we could release the excess to the developer.
Okay, so my question is that all these, all these phases that, that Graves already gone through and estimated, he has his ten or twenty percent contingency included in every one of those?
Yes.
Okay, so, that hundred and eighty-one thousand, five hundred and seven dollar number is including all the contingencies?
Yes.
So that alone should be
Well, that's, that's the amount the town will have.
Yeah, but that's in excess, that's actually calculated in excess of, of what, what should be needed?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, so I wouldn't, I wouldn't have a problem with releasing the thirty-six hundred and thirty-eight dollars and twenty-nine cents that's remaining as excess security. What's the uh
No, all the lots and everything are released over there, right?
I believe so.
So all the lots have been released, which raises the question of the covenant. Uh, it's coming up for renewal.
Yeah.
Do you want to renew it, or should we just let it last since you have enough security now to to cover the cost of completing the project?
Why wouldn't, why wouldn't we want to just renew it for another year if that's what he needs, I mean, I, I took a ride up there the other day.
That was kind of my thinking too, it, it doesn't have any financial repercussions.
Right, I took a ride up there the other day and I think there was only maybe two or three lots left to be built on, I think he's got almost everything done.
And how much of the roadway still has, uh, needs a top course?
I think just the last phase.
Phase two E doesn't have top course on it, yet I don't think
And what's the length of the road for phase two E, do we know? The reason I'm asking is because we have, and this is, this is all before my time, so maybe I should keep my mouth shut, but for phase two D roadway, we've got thirty-six hundred dollars. For phase two C, we've got fifty-five hundred dollars. I'm not a paving expert, but for nine, ten thousand, ten thousand, one hundred dollars, I don't think we can get paving equipment out there, let alone pave anything.
You're saying it's, if you look at the phase two E construction of work along Road A, Noble Street, between Station fourteen plus zero zero and Station twenty-three plus twenty-five, so I take that as being typically between stations is a hundred feet if I, if I remember right?
Yeah, I, I'm assuming that these have already been approved, these are all from, um, from March, correct? I'm assuming the board has seen these and approved these in some way, shape, or form, I wasn't on the board in March. I would just question
The board hasn't seen these for some time, it probably goes back to the fall, maybe or late summer was the last time you had examined this kind of information.
I just looking at this, for the, the last page here, the project Pierpon Estates Phase two D date, March twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-three.
Right, so he had gone out at Tony's request
Yep.
So this is the current information.
Right. So if this is current information, that means the first thing we have to do would be approve these estimates.
Yes, if you agree with these estimates, then, you know, the question is, do you want to release the excess or not? If you don't, if you're not comfortable with these estimates, you don't have to, to release the excess.
I, I, my, my feeling is, even though I drive around back there every now and then, it's been quite some time, since I've been back there, I don't think I've ever seen a, a complete set of finished plans, this, this is all approved way before my time. Um, I know there's been waivers and other items that have been passed, granted, and there's been some piecemeal stuff done. Um, without, me personally, without going out and actually seeing or having some kind of a plan that shows where the, the rest of the work is, I I'm hesitant to approve what I'm looking at as for the estimates. Not, nothing against Graves, it's just for my own
Sure.
For my, I have to be somewhat responsible to the, to the citizens of Dudley to actually have looked through this and and with, without having some kind of a tie-in to what these numbers are actually showing as areas or
A year or two ago, he had, uh, tried to get the completed portions of the subdivision accepted by town meeting. And he had asphalt plans prepared and, uh, we did a site inspection, there was a number of punch list items that needed to be completed, and he never followed through, he didn't complete those, you know, few items for phases, one, two A, two B, two C, and two D. Then he came in with the final phase, two E, which was a, a major effort on his part. So, the portions of the subdivision that do have the final paving are in good shape, but still need some work, catch basins need to be repaired, some of the sidewalk issues, um, some streetlights that need to go in, so there's still work in those other phases that need to be completed. So my assumption is that he's going to, uh, complete two E and all the other phases and come in for acceptance within a certainly not this year, but perhaps next year.
Mm-hmm.
So I think he's getting close to, to wrapping this up.
With the amount of money that's in, that's in the account, I can't imagine that getting back thirty-six hundred dollars, one way or the other, is really gonna make it or break it.
You've got a lot of money tied up.
Right, if Mr. Edmison's not comfortable with it, let's just leave it as it is.
I just, I mean, I see the two E and there's more amounts in there, it's just that not being familiar with what work has to be done
Mm-hmm.
and where, it's just, I just would like to see some kind of tie-in.
Okay.
If he were to walk away from the subdivision, would that be the total, like, would that Graves total be one eighty-two, that's what the people will be paying a betterment for? If this, if he walked away and these people had to go through the betterment process, would that be the total?
No, we have the cash, so the town would be able to go in and complete the work with the money we have available.
Yeah.
Well, we'll have the money more than
Well, that's why we have Graves do the estimate, so we account for public sector wages.
He's, he's got a twenty percent contingency on everything.
So if we go to the, the, what is it, the phase two E, this is one that has the largest amount in it.
Yes.
Top course, two inch compacted thickness, he's got about two hundred and eighty tons at a hundred and twenty dollars a ton for thirty-three thousand, six hundred dollars. Um, the way my, my, my experience, how I estimate usually asphalt work is by square yard, and I could be off on this, but just figuring an approximate of sixty-five dollars a square yard, you come up with the amount of square footage, or then you can multiply it by nine to get square footage, divide by twenty-four, because roadway's twenty-four feet long, and I'm coming up with a hundred and ninety-four linear feet of roadway. That's basically two lots, right? What do we have for frontage out there?
This is saying that there's nine hundred and twenty-five linear feet of roadway to be paved at twenty-four feet wide.
Dan, you know they make an asphalt calculator if you Google it. Concrete calculator. How would you
Right, but I, again, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not in site work, but how many feet has to be done still?
This says, this says nine, the way I read the, the way I read the estimate, from, from fourteen plus zero zero station, and station's twenty-three plus twenty-five, twenty-three minus fourteen is nine hundred. And it's, the twenty, plus twenty-five is, is twenty-five more feet, so nine hundred and twenty-five feet long by twenty-four feet wide will give you the square footage that needs to be paved.
Right, then you divide that by nine for square yards and you multiply that by, suppose sixty-five, and you're at a hundred and sixty thousand dollars.
Dan, I have up on screen sort of the phases, the locations of the phases, because it's very confusing.
We just move this to the next meeting, so I can go take a look at it.
Yep.
Because I haven't been up there in a while either.
Well, or we can, or, or we can just let it go, I mean
Yeah, I owe my own paving equipment.
Did he ask for the thirty-six hundred dollars to be refunded?
Uh, not formally.
So then we just let it go.
Okay.
I mean, we don't, you know, if you want to go up there and take a look at it, that's fine, but I'm, I'm just saying, we don't have to act, actually act on this, it's just, there's an additional thirty-six hundred dollars ex, extra in the account, it's not gonna hurt anybody.
Well, he's closing the bond and giving us cash anyways, right?
Right, I mean, we're in a much better state than we were before.
And I think, compared to previous subdivisions
Yeah, we got rid of letters of credit and now we have, we have cash in the bank, so I mean, like
But I guess the only place I'm going is, let's assume that, how you read the
That's what I'm reading.
The station's at nine hundred and so much feet, and you have some experience with, with paving there. I don't know if thirty-three thousand is sufficient to pave nine hundreds, nine hundred linear, linear, linear feet of roadway. So then my, my issue then isn't if he's gonna give us cash if we're going through a surety, or if he's gonna combine them all into one, my issue would be, is his estimate correct? That's where my issue comes in.
Well, that's, you know, why we have Graves Engineering do the calculations, so that's their job to, to figure that out.
Did he put a stamp on these estimates?
Yeah.
I'm not seeing anything stamped there.
Gonna call it on morale and see how much asphalt goes for a yard?
We could just, we could just ask Jeff to come in and explain it too.
Because I'm like Dan.
Right, how much asphalt goes for is the material price, then you have the equipment, the manpower, you have to get out there.
The laborers or
There's a lot of other things involved with it, so if the asphalt, if the, if the asphalt price itself was a hundred and twenty dollars a yard or whatever, that's great, but there's a lot of material, there's other things that go into that. Like, I can't build a deck for the price of the wood.
No.
There's other things involved.
So basically, no action then?
That's, that's what I'm thinking, unless you guys want to have Graves come in and explain it to us?
What was the action you were looking for?
He's getting rid of the bank and he's giving us cash, so it doesn't really make a difference.
I'm saying just let it go.
Yeah, okay.
Unless Tony comes in and says, I want my thirty-six hundred dollars.
Okay.
I, my comments have nothing to do with the cash, the bank, whatever else, my comments have to do with the estimate.
How he's estimating.
If we don't estimate, if we don't act on this, or, or take some action, this estimate from Graves is accepted. And it could be a hundred percent correct, it could be, I don't know that, I don't know what work is being priced, you're guessing, I'm guessing. If we, I think we should take some action in order to approve, or to, to have this, that we have some kind of surety that's, that's correct.
Okay, so
If that means that Graves comes in here and talks to us, if that means we go out there and take a look at it, if that means that we, um, have to have some kind of plan
I think the best way to candle it would be to have Graves come here and explain it to us, just so that we've, we're all on the same page.
Well, like Dave said, if he walks away and we're left with a hundred eighty, and they won't use a betterment slot, and then Graves comes back with a four hundred thousand dollar, just to finish it.
That's what I'm worried about.
That's what I'm worried about.
We have the Graves estimate, I mean, that's not gonna change.
If, if anybody, if this, if the developer walks away, we no longer can do this work in private hands.
Yeah.
The town has to do it prevailing, prevailing wage.
Yes.
That's also different.
Well, that's, he accounts for that if you read his memo. Well, that's, he accounts for that if you read his memo. He, he just stated.
I can write a lot of things down, doesn't necessarily mean it's correct. People make mistakes. All I'm asking for is some kind of justification.
Thank you.
Yeah, no problem. Let's, let's have, let's have Graves come in at his convenience. Doesn't have to be the next meeting, if it's the meeting after, whatever.
And as you say, if Tony wants to get the money back, then I think it becomes an issue. If he doesn't, then.
Right, but I think, just to get some clarification from, from Mr. Edmiston, let's have, have Jeff come in and explain how he's estimating this.
Do we have to vote on that, all these, um?
No, there's no, no real action that's required.
Put it into about one, one thing.
If you're not gonna release the funds, there's no action that's required.
No, so, okay.
Did Graves make this estimate for the town or for the developer?
Tony wanted to cancel his bank instruments and have all the money.
For the, if he made it for the developer, then we don't have to accept it.
I, I asked him to do it. I asked Jeff Walsh.
If he made it for the town, then we have to take some action. We have to get some kind of verification of the number.
Okay.
He made it, he made it for the town. He's our engineer. He's not Tony's engineer.
Right, he works, he works for us, correct?
I understand that, but.
So I'll, I'll ask him to.
Right, so with the town, if we have a question, we ask, we ask the engineer.
Sure.
I'm sure Graves Engineering has some private clients, correct?
Oh, sure. Okay. So that was number four. We're over to standard business discussion, status reports on finishing construction of acceptance of uncompleted, unaccepted subdivision streets, including Pierpon Estates, Rocky Hill Estates, Country View Estates, Tobin Farm Estates, and Lion Estates. Do we have any information on that?
No.
Okay. Inspections and actions associated with site plans. So we have Legacy Landing, Country Club Acres. We have SEP Solar, Oxford Avenue. We have J D and D twenty-four, Oxford Avenue, site inspection reports, and we have Stevens Mill. Do we have any information on those?
No.
No, okay. Review decision of Nichols College Town Home Project and possible vote to approve. Do we have some information come in that they now own?
I checked to see if that property's transferred. It is not yet, so.
Okay, so we're still in a holding pattern.
That's right.
Okay, uh, next one is planners' plate.
Couple of items. Um, on the Complete Streets program, since you're the Complete Streets Committee, there's a new funding cycle open now. But unfortunately, there's a new policy in place which says that one community cannot get more than five hundred thousand dollars within a fourth fiscal year period. So we got four hundred thousand dollars
Last time.
in Feb, in October of twenty-one. So we have to wait another year and a half, two fiscal years, in order to be eligible to apply for the five hundred thousand. So we got four hundred and the new cap is five hundred thousand. So we could theoretically go after a hundred thousand, but it doesn't make any sense.
No, a hundred thousand's gonna get you about twenty feet of sidewalk.
Or it could get us eighteen hundred square, uh, feet of roadway and
Pierpon Estates.
One of the two.
It's okay.
We don't lose that hundred thousand.
No, but I mean, we, we weren't able, we weren't eligible for it before this year, right? That's a change that we're, we're, it went from four hundred to five hundred thousand, and that was this year. But because we, we qualified for the four hundred thousand
Right.
two years ago, we now have to wait another two years.
So I, I don't know what, what your thinking was, but, um, within town hall, we're thinking of Airport Road continuing, you know, we have the Shared Streets and Spaces Grant, that Tanyard Road, Airport Road, Dudley Hill Road. And then to do the Complete Streets project from that point down, as far as we can get towards the Shopping Plaza.
Yep.
Would be sort of our thinking in terms of the next application. The second item is, um, the retail marijuana store proposed for Forty Hall Road. Will be coming in soon. That is the, the, I think it's a used car lot now adjacent to Universal Tag, that site. So that will require a special permit of the planning board. Just a heads up, it should be coming in soon. So I'll be routing that around to departments, and we'll be scheduling for that probably late May, early June, something of, of that timeframe. And the last item is, uh, the First Avenue water main and, uh, project is, is now out to bid. There was a site walkthrough today on First Avenue. I believe fifteen or sixteen entities took out plans, so there seems to be some interest in that. The bid opening will be later, well, I think will be in early May. So just to let you know, that project is still moving forward. That's a CDBG project. So that's, uh, it looks like we'll have some good competition for the, for that project.
What's that acronym again? I'm sorry.
Community Development Block Grant.
Okay, and this is for, what you said?
First Avenue from Brandon to George, essentially.
And you said this was for water mains?
Yes, water main and some, uh, some drainage work.
Okay.
And then there, then there'll be, the next application would be to repave the street.
The street. Replace, so replacing current water mains or?
Yes.
There you go. See, they have a whole pile on Schofield Ave.
And that was the end of your planners' plate, Bill?
Yes.
Okay. Any comments from the planning board?
Just real quick, Mr. Chairman, uh, last month, we talked about erosion control and, um, some of the different construction sites around town where they weren't really paying attention to what they should be doing. Uh, we asked the building inspector to talk to the people on Mason Road, I believe it was, about their erosion control that was set up. They didn't really have much set up. At that time, it had rained a couple of times, and then we had erosion soils coming down, uh, down the hill towards the street. Couple of days, three days after the meeting, I happened to drive past there again, and all the silk fences were up. Everything was taken care of. I drove out of the way again tonight, and it looked like they're up, doing a good job of doing with the upkeep. I just wanna say, it's, it's a pleasure to work with groups like that who, um, anybody can have an oversight, miss something, but once it's pointed out to them, they actually take active, active steps to, to correct matters. It's, it's good work with people like that.
Good.
I just wanted to say, I, I was, I was surprised last Sunday. I took a ride over to, um, Legacy Landing, the, um, the new subdivision there, fifty-five and older. And there's actually people living there now. I would say about half the houses that are completed are, are now occupied. And I was very surprised to see that there was a, um, missing manhole cover. Approximately one house away from an occupied house. And, I mean, it was right on the street. Somebody could've drove their car into it. There was a piece of planking sticking out of the ground where the manhole cover was missing, but I mean, that's not gonna really stop a car from falling in there, or worse yet, a kid. So, um, have we had anything from, how, how long has it been since Graves has been out there to take a look?
I believe we had a report at the last meeting.
Yeah, not too long ago.
So it was maybe three weeks ago.
So he was out there and he didn't see this?
I don't think it showed up on the report.
That was the one that wasn't much of a report, and Richard was complaining about, about it not being much of a report.
Okay, alright. I, I, like I said, I was very surprised to see this. I mean, like, anybody could just drive into the, it's, it's, it's basically like a storm drain, you know, the, the two-foot square hole. It, it's like the, the, the rim and the grate is gone. The asphalt's broken up around it, and it's the concrete, the concrete piece underneath is still there, and it's full of water. So, I mean, if a little kid fell in there, they could drown. Somebody's dog falls in there, they could drown. I mean, it's, I, I was really surprised to see that, like, no, no barricade around. I mean, at least put up some sawhorses or.
Put the cover back on when you're done working on it.
I don't think you can, 'cause I think the piece, the piece, the steel, um, frame that goes around where the cover sits is gone.
I'll ask the highway superintendent to, uh, look at that issue and contact the developer to.
Yeah, 'cause I, I mean, that's, that's a really bad situation, I think, 'cause I'm sure that sump is at least six or eight feet deep if somebody fell in there.
Do you know about where this was?
It's the last, if you're driving in from the airport roadside, it's the last house on the left.
Could've just reported to the police department. They would've sent someone down there to look at it. There, there are public safety officers.
Yeah, I mean, this was last Sunday. I mean, maybe it's fixed. I hope it is, but as of last Sunday, it wasn't, and I was really surprised to see that, especially with people living in the neighborhood. I mean, that's, that's common sense.
For sure.
Yeah. Any, okay, that was planning, any other co, planning board comments?
Nope.
Okay, uh, any other comments from the audience?
I was just gonna mention that, uh, the Complete Streets project, when, uh, when we did that project on Mason Road, that was actually number two on the list. Number one on the list was the Ramshorn Road intersection. And the only reason we switched it to number, uh, the only reason we switched it up was because they were already doing the sewer mains on, uh, Mason Road. So the engineer was already doing the work, so we could get the engineer to do the work for the sidewalks, like pro bono or something. That's the only reason. So, I mean, you guys do what you want. You're the board now. You wanna change the order, that's fine, but I just thought I'd remind you that that's, when we hashed it all out, priority number one was that horrible intersection right near Shepherd Hill and going down to Shepherd Hill.
Right, but the, I think the issue that Bill just was stating was the fact that we've got this other project, I forgot the name of it, but that, that's gonna work on the Tanyard Road intersection in front of the golf course. And then that's, that's not really gonna make concrete changes. It's more like signage and striping and stuff like that, if I remember right, correct?
The thought would be to dead-end Tanyard Road, so it doesn't go into that intersection any longer.
Okay.
Re-channel the, the approaches to that intersection, so it's regular. And to, uh, fix the entrance into the golf course, which is very wide, to, to channelize that, so there's
So they have it in, 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 and out kind of thing?
Be concentrated in that intersection area.
Right, and people aren't just driving all different directions?
Yes.
So the thought was we use that project to help correct that situation and then work on.
But I agree that Ramshorn Road
Yeah.
intersection is also a high priority.
Yeah, and I mean, that's, I mean, the only thing I think that's gonna be more expensive over Ramshorn Road is we're dealing with a historical cemetery and all that that goes along with it. So, I mean, five hundred thousand dollars may not be enough to take care of that. Okay, um, do we have any voucher payments?
No.
Next meeting date is May tenth at seven PM in this room. Okay, somebody like to make a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion to adjourn.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Is that unanimous?